We'll call to order the July 6th City Commission meeting. I think the first thing on our agenda today would be certainly our invocation. Invocation by Pastor Terry Engler. Is Pastor Terry in the audience? Know any anybody wishing to offer invocation?
If you all pray with me. Lord heavenly Father, we just pray your guidance and blessing on this meeting. We pray for the folks presenting and pray for the leadership we have up here that will make the wisest and most effective decisions for our community as a whole. And we just lift this time up to you and your son Jesus, Holy Name. Amen.
All right. Stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on our item of agenda is personal appearances. We have Emily Connell from Main Street.
Thanks. And Craig Yarian, who is president of our board.
Please come to the podium. Yeah. Thank you.
Well, just to give you a little background.
Could you please state your name and address?
Oh, yeah. Sure. Craig Yarian, 1730 Peyton Circle.
Thank you.
Couple of months ago, Herb had approached Main Street to see if we could at least lead a discussion on a potential new streetscape. What kind of interest would there be in something like that? And as a result, we put a committee together primarily of Main Street members, but we also pulled in a few people that are not Main Street members. And we started reviewing streetscapes, not only locally, but all around the United States, to get a wide variety of ideas of maybe what can be done. Based on that, we came up with a list of features that the committee thought would be important to look at. And we developed a survey. And then we went out and basically did a survey, one-on-one. It wasn't a case of us just dropping a survey off and hoping somebody'd fill it out. I think the average person took probably over 30 minutes to fill out the survey because there's a lot of questions and stuff. And we tried to get to as many people as we could. It took about a month. And it's really probably more of a sampling than a full-blown survey. But we managed to get to 20 business owners and building owners in the downtown historic district. And I think you've got a copy of the survey. The bottom line was there are a lot of potential features to consider. But after it's all said and done, did the average person, again downtown, who's either a business owner or a building owner, and we have a couple of employees that were sprinkled throughout here, did they think pursuing a streetscape was a good idea? And I know we were hoping that we'd get at least somewhat of a majority, and we got 100%. Everybody that we talked to was extremely excited about the idea of doing something. They all have different ideas, what they want done, but they really do want the city to pursue some sort of a streetscape. And the survey, I think the letter that you've got, it does show the survey on here. And I listed this in order of importance as per people taking the survey. And the number one thing was to eliminate or reduce downtown semi-truck traffic. That was very high in the list. Increased pedestrian traffic. Actually, everything was, came in very high on the list to get down to the parallel parking area, and then it kind of splits up. So Emily has some pictures of some possible drawings we were looking at when we were considering some of those. You want to explain those, Emily?
Well, these were provided to us by staff just as examples of streetscapes. We've all seen streetscapes that have been redone primarily in historic towns because we've seen them because they actually work. And our goal is to have the downtown become more and more of a destination, more of a place where people who live in El Dorado and Butler County want to come and stay and shop and bring their relatives and their friends. And if we want to be there, other people will want to be there, like visitors to the lake, like people out at Butler Community College. So the idea is, what cards do we have to play to make the downtown more of a destination, both for businesses and for citizens? So streetscape redesign has been, how long would you say Herb, been in the, one of the strategies for accomplishing this in historic downtowns? At least 35 years, right?
Lawrence did theirs when I was a child, and so...
That was stupidly just the other day.
It was longer than 35 years ago. So I think, I think changing the complexion, and I think Atchison did theirs before Lawrence. And so now we're even back further. I think Atchison even went with a plaza, and it's walkable and not, no cars. And so I think cities have been making or trying to refocus sense of place in downtowns for a long time.
And streetscape is a huge component of that. And we have made progress. This is just, this is not our, our streetscape, but it's an example of some of the elements that we talked about in the survey. This kind of extended sidewalk out into intersections, whether or not people thought taking four lanes on Main Street would, and reducing it to two, doing either parallel parking or diagonal parking. We have a really nice truck route, a through route. The sort of the adage we've been working with is, four lanes take people through places, two lanes take people to places. We don't want the through traffic to be further than a block away. Mine is just mine. But we want this to be very pedestrian-friendly, very shopper-friendly place when you go downtown for services, either professional or for shopping reasons. You stay for a while. And there are water features. We have nice lighting already. We have, our historic district is already informed. What we need to do is take the next step, is what we're hoping, that this very positive survey indicates to you all that there is a next step to take in exploring the feasibility of redoing the streetscape in El Dorado, on Main Street, within the historic district.
Let me add something to that if I could. Couple of things came to mind as we started working on this. It was kind of a surprise to me when I really started thinking about it. But the committee feels like El Dorado is in a very unique position to benefit from a streetscape, probably more so than a lot of cities. We're at the intersection of some major crossroads, US 77, US 54, and 254, and the Kansas Turnpike. They all meet right here. You've got a large lake literally in your back door that has the largest park system in the state around it. Surprising to me, that lake attracts more than a million visitors per year. You've got a college out here that has 8,000-plus students, and we're less than 30 minutes from Wichita. So there's a lot of things that come together right here in El Dorado that a streetscape, something similar to this, or some idea would really benefit from. Any questions?
Can I, I want to preface too, so that new people on the commission know this.
Thank you. This, and I went to Main Street because probably six, seven years ago, I'd asked the commission to consider doing an intersection, changing the intersections downtown to the bumped-out intersections. And again, I'm thinking about pedestrians not having to go so far between curbs. And so you're talking about making it more pedestrian-friendly. And the commission had said that we could do that at one intersection. And so the projects have kept coming, and we haven't really had the time. So this spring, late winter, Brad came up and told me that that project is on the top of the list. Before, before we built that, I wanted to visit with Main Street to get their input. And I'd hate to build something that we knew we were going to tear out. It seems like a waste of public funds. So, so I asked them what they thought. And so now you're getting that, that input from them. The, if you're interested in pursuing this, I think the next step is a downtown master plan. I don't think a master plan, unless you tailored it to be just about a streetscape, would be just about a streetscape. And so this may be something else. But I didn't want to, I didn't want to spend the resources building something if Main Street didn't think it was a good idea, and if we thought we were going to tear it out before its useful life was up. And that kind of... I was going to say, the ultimate goal is to reduce the number of empty buildings in the downtown area and hopefully increase tax revenue. And I think that, that doing a master plan would, again, unless the commission said just focus on the streetscape, would do that, would have the opportunity to do it, you'd expect it to. Just like the airport master plan talks about capital improvements, it also talks about business. And you have a plan for the business improvement at the, at the airport. Vince and I have talked about the need for housing downtown. I think if you did a master plan, it would allow more stakeholders to have more ownership and help guide you in the future if you, if you have an interest in it. If, if you believe that the programs we have in place are doing what we want them to do, then, then maybe you don't have much interest.
We know that we want a master plan that includes the entire historic district, that we are privileged to be designated as a national historic district. We have a lot to learn about what that really means as a community, as a community of citizens and developers and businesses. But we're in that process of educating ourselves about the advantages beyond just the financial benefits in terms of HOPE6 grants and tax credit programs and things that depend on Main Street and historic designation. But to really look at what would increase the density downtown, that's what we really need. We need the Coops Building to be full. We need our apartments all to be full. We need them to be up to standard. We need all the buildings to be maximized, highest and best used downtown. And to do that, we have to meet the developers with this kind of amenity, so that developers don't go out on a limb and really don't feel that the big, strong bones of the city are supporting them. And that's what we're looking for with the master plan.
When you redesign this?
Thank you, Town.
When you redesign downtown, can you do something about those pedestals with the big bulls on the top of them? There's a lot of people that don't like them there because they can't see around them. They have to pull out the intersection because they're right there on the corners. It's been a, it's been a real problem for a lot of people around the courthouse, especially near, near his building there. They have to drive out the intersection to get, get out there.
Well, I think that's what a master plan does. It takes a look at what our actual experiences are every day and figure out what elements we want to keep, which ones we want to improve, and what is most possible. And if we have to do it in phases, I know that one of the things that's really nice with historic districts, and I think El Dorado is perfect for this kind of treatment, is arches that span the streets, at least Main Street, north and south, and maybe even central, that mark the boundaries of the historic district, so that you know that you've really gotten someplace that's important and special. And we'd have to look at those monuments and see whether they could go or stay relative to those we're working on designs for those right now to insert into photographs, so we could all take a look at what that might look like, what the scale would be, what the cost would be. And those, that kind of demarcation of a historic district could happen with or without or before a streetscape was completely redone. But it would begin to make the downtown much more distinctive as a historic district. But these are all things that we have to look at, Commissioner, and we would. And it's not, I mean, we, we have done a sampling survey, and I would imagine there would be a lot more necessity of work with someone who could help us facilitate a master plan for the downtown.
I tell you, a town to go look at is North Kansas City. What they've done to their downtown area, it is really nice. They've done what you, you want to do there, and put an arch across it, and you drive into it, and it is really nice.
Well, it's not, this can't be, Craig and I want to do this. This has to be a we project, and very soon. We have to see if the project is worth exploring. If this is, if these are options we want to really look at and feel they could be very effective, to take El Dorado to the next step, to be the jewel neighborhood for Wichita. We're not that big. No, our downtown could be really extraordinary. Look at what flowers do. I mean, and those are just hanging from historic light poles, and how thrilled we are with those. It's not so big. Every single building counts. If we can fill some of the vacant buildings that we currently have, it will make a huge difference. There isn't a neighborhood in Wichita, including Delano or any of the other ones, that can match us.
I mean, I don't know what our commitment would look like on our end, but I like the idea of a master plan for downtown. You know, I think it would help us all gauge where we're going and our, what's success and what isn't. I think it would help us as a commission. I think it'd help Main Street, the developers. I mean, I just think, you know, it was a big win when they got the historic district. And I think kind of since then, it's kind of been like, what are we gauging our, where are we going with Main Street? And I, I think the thought process, I mean, at least, again, I don't know what our commitment would be, so I'm not saying. But I love the idea and the concept behind it. I think it could really add to the sense of pride we could have in the community, you know, seeing something like that come to fruition eventually. Those are my thoughts.
Well, and I would agree. A, a master plan is, is, is going to flesh out a lot more than a streetscape. And that's what, because in my opinion, a streetscape in and of itself is not going to be a single solution. So it really needs to be part of a bigger picture. And to be identifying whether it's housing, what, what kind of market analysis for, for downtown stores fit our, our focus, what are we, what are we trying to do, what are we trying to be? Those all flesh out in a plan like that. So I, that absolutely is a, is an appropriate next step. I would agree.
So what do we need to do to get started?
Well, I guess that's my question, that's my question back to Main Street. So what, what are the next steps and what, what, where do we go from here?
One of the things that I've done, I guess, kind of unofficially, I've put a group Emily's going to hate this term. I call it a think tank, I know. But it's just a group of investors that have a big stake in the downtown area. And we're going to get together and just brainstorm, you know, what do we need to do? Not just with the downtown historic district, but the outlying area. You know, we've got a lot of building and residences around the downtown area and things like that. So that's one thing that's going on. It's kind of unofficial, if you will, but that's one step we're taking from our standpoint.
Our standpoint being Main Street putting together. Craig and I had this argument about whether it should be called a think sta, tank, or a, a strategic action group. I, I, I want it to, to be a group that actually is interested in doing things. They already have a history of doing things downtown, believing in downtown, investing in downtown. And if you are a developer and you knew that there was a master plan in the works, and that all of the investment that you've already made downtown is, is going to finally make a difference in valuation, finally make a difference in all the things that these single buildings and single projects have made, I think that will help inspire a recommitment to downtown. We have a history of reinvestment in downtown in recent years, and I think we can finish that in a certain way. We can finish the buildings that have been started. We can go on with some of this and build the density that we need, working with staff, working with the planning department, working with engineering. There's infrastructure that needs to be worked on in terms of drainage and those kinds of things. That whole master plan will show up, all of those things, and we can prioritize them and see what's most effective first, and then come back to you. Is that what you say, Herb?
And, yeah, that's certainly a piece of it. We routinely do this kind of work, so we routinely ask the question. This is normally work done by planners or design professionals of some shape or form. I guess I'd say that if you're interested, let staff go out and visit with some people that would do this work, come back and report what we think the cost of that would be. We'll even develop kind of a scope of work, because I think, as you alluded to, there are going to be components of this that are going to be the city's. We've been, in this budget process, we're talking about doing a bunch of stormwater work, first in Maine, first in Gordy. And so before we do stormwater work with our existing infrastructure, we need to understand if it's going to get torn out in a year or two. So let us kind of come back and tell you what we think the costs are, what we think we need done internally for our own infrastructure. And then, and then if you want to have a conversation with Main Street about partnership, you can certainly do that. Or others for partners.
I want to throw out a new term, instead of think tank or some of the others. There's a, this is not a new, excuse me, this is not a new process. And the term charrette is, is one that is used...
That's the word I've been looking for. For the rec plan.
Yeah. And, and a charrette is a, it's, the scope of that can be defined by both the professionals helping you facilitate or through that, as well as, as, as Main Street or staff or whoever's going to be involved with it. But it is a process that, that brings together all the stakeholders, identified stakeholders, city, investors, property owners, Main Street, whoever gets identified as a stakeholder. And usually, to me, the most successful ones are the ones that are asset-based, rather than picking on what's not working, what is working, and how can we grow with that. So I, as you investigate, I would, I would encourage you to look through the charrette process. And you could look at, very specifically, the National Charrette Institute, which just finished a big, Oklahoma City goes through that same process to kind of identify some of their brick town areas. It's not, it, it's a pretty well-established and a well-oiled machine condensed into a week-long and, and result-based. So I would encourage you to look at that, too.
And we do have our 2030 comp plan, which is pretty heavy on developing the downtown.
The only thing I would throw out, I think there's an opportunity, before you charrette, the think tank part, is after sitting through that project downtown, the Wichita folks?
Oh, yeah.
I think there's an opportunity, and this is the 26-year-old in me, to maybe let this be something that could recruit, retain, keep millennials. And, and if there's, I would take into consideration, as you go through that, what we could do for that generation. Because I think we have a lot of opportunity to do better.
Oh, yeah.
In the community. And so that, I think the downtown, I think the millennial generation is very attracted to downtowns and, and something like this, and so...
They would be part of the stakeholders.
Yeah.
And I mean, part of, of our idea for downtown is, is also in the comp plan, which is to make it a wireless environment, just in the downtown and the historic district to start with. If we can't do all of El Dorado, we're exploring that right now. That kind of thing, using alternative energies downtown in combination with historic buildings and our, our terrific story, our El Dorado story, and use that story to build a future, which is all about energy. And taking advantage of the, our history and our industry, and moving forward and building on that, and making it an energy-smart community.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have another personal appearance, which would be Kurt Zeeman with the Police Department.
Good evening. Kurt Zeeman, Chief of Police, El Dorado Police Department. I'm here to give you our annual Police Department Report. And wow, it's already up there, thanks to our tech person in the back room, Darcy. I just want to start out by saying, we're very fortunate to have a very professional, very dedicated and progressive police department. I couldn't be prouder of the men and women of the El Dorado Police Department, a good bunch to work with and lead, so... Our department motto, the department motto is "Community Safety, Partners in Service", states the essential purpose of the El Dorado Police Department. The department protects the rights of all persons within its jurisdiction to be free from criminal attack, to be secure in their positions, and live in peace. Our department commitment, the El Dorado Police Department is committed to providing a safe, livable community with a high quality of life by maintaining order, protecting persons and property, with equal and consistent enforcement of the law. I put this photo on there. I actually borrowed that from the internet, but I've actually got that posted right above our time clock. It says, "Your job gives you authority, but your behavior gives you respect." That means a lot to me, and it means a lot to the people in the department. I've always believed that you treat people the way they'd want to be treated, you're not going to have too many problems. And typically, we don't. We have to deal with some undesirable people quite often, but I think the way you talk to them, the way you handle them, does a lot for, you know, keeping you from having to use any type of force. And Danny Jones can attest that that's right above the time clock. So they see it every day, they punch in or out, so... That's just an organizational chart of our department. We do have four patrol crews. We work 12-hour shifts on the street. Each one of those shifts is led by a lieutenant, and there's four people under them. We have a criminal investigation section led by a lieutenant. We've actually got two detectives under her, and we actually have two vacancies right now, because on paper, we're actually one person short right now. But I've got three young gentlemen going to the academy July 20th. So on paper, we're one short, but realistically, we're four short for another 14 weeks or so. Role of a police officer, we have a code of ethics we go by, professionalism and conduct, knowledge of what public expects from officers. They expect us to be law experts. We're not. We know a lot about criminal law, we know a lot about civil law. We kind of lean on the attorneys for that. They expect you to be a counselor. Sometimes they want you to be superhuman and have all the answers. One thing I stress to the officers, I don't like to tell anybody that there's nothing we can do for them. If we can't physically help them, we're going to try to give them where to go if we can't answer the question for them. So some of the duties and responsibilities, obviously, protect life and property, enforce state, local laws, patrol commercial business and residential areas, traffic enforcement, investigating and accurate reporting of crimes, making arrests, community policing, education of the public, and continued training. Calls for service include civil disputes and disturbances, welfare checks, animal complaints, and a lot of miscellaneous stuff. You wouldn't believe some of the calls we take sometimes. Equipment used on patrol includes, but not limited to, semi-automatic handgun, electronic control device or taser, OC spray, expandable baton, patrol rifle, portable radio, wearable video device, ballistic vest. I might point out right here, this wearable video device, all the stuff you've heard in the news last year, all these riots going on, you're hearing a lot about body-worn cameras. We've been wearing body-worn cameras since 2009, the El Dorado Police Department. They're not the best, but they're getting us by and we're in the process of upgrading those. But we're pretty progressive. The in-car videos, we've been running in-car videos for going on 17, 18 years now. So we've had that video for a long, long time. Some of the stuff in the patrol vehicle, traffic radar, emergency lights and sirens, digital camera, in-car video system, and some other miscellaneous stuff. Our criminal investigation section, like we said, we've got a lieutenant, that's Maggie Schreiber. She leads two detectives currently. As soon as we get full staff, we'll get one or two more in there. They investigate major felonies, narcotics investigations, child forensic interviews, crime scene investigations, death investigations. They maintain the evidence room and testify in court. Some of the crime scene procedures that require from all officers is securing the crime scene, identify witnesses, accurate note-taking, photography, collection of evidence, and diagramming crime scenes. Generally speaking, the success or failure of a criminal prosecution usually depends on the evidence presented to the court. So it's very important that we look for and collect whatever evidence we can. Sometimes, depending on the crime, that can be a time-consuming process. I think I went too fast. These are some 2014 crime stats, I'll just go over them real quick. I can tell you, generally speaking, most of the Group A offenses have actually dropped. We are seeing a increase in your fraud-type cases where you're really internet fraud, scams, and that sort of thing. That seems to be the trend of the day. We worked five embezzlement cases last year. Like I said, frauds are up 129%. Larceny and theft rose a little bit. Motor vehicle theft actually rose quite a bit. We had 24 last year. Fortunately, we solved most of those. Robbery, no change. We had three in 14, we had three in 13. Sex offenses went up just a tick. Weapons law violations went up a little bit. All other offenses went up about 27%. Bad checks actually went down. Disorderly conduct up about 65%. DUIs were actually down. Drunkenness was up by about five. Family offenses actually down 27%. Liquor law violations were up 68%. Most of those are, we go to some of these party houses and get minors in possession of alcohol. That number probably represents most of those. Runaways were down, trespassing cases were up just a little bit. Traffic accidents, zero fatalities in 2014, 47 hit-and-runs, 48 injury accidents, and 212 non-injury accidents. In 2014, the El Dorado Police Department investigated 2,464 cases. When I say cases, that's when there's actually a full-blown investigation required. Somebody's reporting a crime or we're working accident or something like that. In addition to those cases, the Police Department responded to 16,087 other calls for service in 2014. Notices to appear in court, 3,475 were written in '14. Our municipal court issued 376 warrants and we served 362 warrants in 2014. Some of the community activities we're involved in, you know, for years, we have had to work all these community events where they block a street or the parade. And I said, "You know what? Instead of just working them, we're going to participate in these things." Part of my community policing vision. So this happens to be a picture of the Walnut River Festival. We had two officers, they did a child safety seat booth, they did safety seat checks and that sort of thing. At the downtown car show, we actually had two of our police vehicles, a patrol car and our police motorcycle. We participated in the traveling wall that was out the Legion in the 9/11 ceremonies there. We participated there at the senior center in the spring fling. We did a prescription drug take-back. That was a very successful program. We had, I believe, four boxes just packed full of expired prescription drugs that people brought to us and we disposed of those. Continuing education and training. All officers are required to get 40 hours of in-service training a year to maintain their certifications. Our training year just completed June 30th. The state goes from July 1st to June 30th in training year. This picture just happens to be self-defense training, Krav Maga. We have several certified instructors in our department. We do that so we don't have to send the whole department outside for training. We've got a lot of things that we've got to keep up on annually. We've got two, actually three, state-certified police firearms instructor. I've been one since 1995, but I gave up that duty a few years ago. But we have two other police firearms instructors that we get qualified at our own firing range. We have two taser instructors, we have to be recertified of that each year. We have two ASP, expandable baton instructors. We have one Krav Maga defensive tactics instructor. And we've got another one that wants to go attend that instructor school. So we'll probably have two. And we've got one traffic Doppler radar, LiDAR instructor. Some other specialized certifications we have in our department. We have one certified police polygraph examiner, Chad Young, the deputy chief. He got certified in that four years ago. Very good thing for our department. We do all of our pre-employment polygraphs, we do our criminal polygraphs, we do criminal polygraphs for a lot of other agencies. Before, we had to, if you had a criminal polygraph, you were at the mercy of the KBI or Hayesville PD to fit it into the schedule. Now, if you've got a case and you want to do one, it's a matter of getting Chad down there and reviewing the case a little bit, talking to the case officer and getting it done. We've got one commercial truck inspector, he keeps it pretty busy. We have one certified K-9 drug handler. We had one officer recently graduated from the KU Emerging Leader Academy. And we've got one officer currently taking the KU Certified Public Manager Program. Some new projects, I think you, some of you have heard me talk before about the electronic ticketing solution that we've been wanting to get. That is in the process. We actually had a conference call last Thursday, and I think that's going to be implemented the 20th and 21st of this month. That was something we put in the court budget for this year. And if you don't know what that is, that's the little handheld units where, when you're on a traffic stop, you scan the driver's license and it dumps all that information in that little handheld device. The officer doesn't physically have to write the tickets anymore. Statistically, on a normal traffic stop or you don't have any extenuating circumstances, say you're just stopping somebody, writing them for speeding or whatever, average stop's probably 12, 14 minutes. With these, that can be down as low as four to five minutes. But the other good thing about that is the shorter the traffic stop is, the safer it is for the officer, too. So the other thing that does, we right now have two ladies that enter every ticket we write into the computer. Sonia, who retired last year, that was most of her job. And we didn't replace her when she retired. So Debbie Smith and Susan Everson currently are entering all that data. When we get these e-citations, the officers will bring that unit into the station at the end of the shift and it'll automatically download into the computer. And nobody will have to physically enter that data anymore. So I think it's cost-effective and it's going to save us a lot of time. Bicycle patrol, we bought two new patrol bicycles last year. We've got two officers that are going, Dan, you remember? 20th of this month, we're going to that bike school. Sometime in the end of this month, we're going to Emporia for, I think, a week-long patrol bike officer course. And one thing I don't have on there, we just took delivery of our two new police SUVs while I was on vacation. And we've actually got them tucked away in a building so they don't get hail damage tonight. And I would entertain any questions if you have any.
All righty. Thank you. Thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. I do, I actually do have a couple of questions. Sorry, I was talking to these back and forths. Just from my own information and maybe also on the camera for everybody. Generally speaking, how many officers respond to a call? Do you try and have two officers at a time? Notice we don't have two officers per car.
Depends on the call. Generally, we don't have two officers per car. If you've seen two officers lately per car, that's because we've got three rookies riding with a training officer.
No, I guess I was thinking generally we wouldn't have, so I was.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Would you normally have two officers respond to a call then?
It depends on the call, a lot of things. It just requires a one-off sort of response. I know if you have a domestic violence call, sometimes it's two or three, depending on what's dispatched. Just about every call's unique and nothing's really routine.
Right.
There is, I know the dispatch center has a protocol for certain, certain calls require certain number of response. If you have a bank alarm, for instance, you'll probably send three officers on that. So it kind of depends on the call. There are a lot of calls, though, that the officers go out by themselves.
Okay. Kind of curious in general. And then also the tasers, with some of the recent news of tasers and also some of the, I mean, what our policy on keeping those around? I mean, it's red where we've had some, some of those tasers have collateral damage that's later on in life, which is brain damage due to electric shock, right?
Yeah, I think.
Is that something we're going to continue working on?
I think a lot of that's still yet to be proven. You know, when those first came out on the market, the taser's actually been around for a long time. Last I looked into it, there's no documented case that they could absolutely say a taser caused a death or anything else. So I can tell you, it's been a good tool for us. The nice thing is, most of the time, you don't even have to use them. When that little red dot shows up on you, I think most people know what that means. You hate to say that, but I mean, it's a deterrent. It's just like the verbal judo we use. And, but I can tell you that, you know, we carry OC spray on our belts, too. Most officers do. And I think I'd almost rather be tased and hit with that OC spray because you're going to have a residual effect from that OC spray for an hour, hour and a half. And I know because I've been sprayed with it. It, the taser is five seconds. Now, they say that'll be some of the worst pain you had in your life for five seconds, but as long as a suspect complies, it's over with. I mean, it's, and the whole idea with the taser, that electrical shock lasts for five minutes when that, that five, five minutes, five seconds, I'm sorry. During that five-second period, when that subject's what they call locked up because it locks your muscles up, that's when the officer goes in to get control of the suspect, get, you know, control their arms and whatever. So, yeah, I think it's a very valuable tool. And unless something changes drastically, we'll keep using them.
And Vince, maybe even a little background. I was very hesitant to allow him to use them because I think it's too easy to tase someone. When you go, when you go up to your uses of force to jump from spray to a taser is an easy jump and you overlook the spray and you, my perception, you pull the gun, you shoot them, and you know that you're done. I worry about that because while I believe that taser will tell you that no one's ever been killed, they're going to qualify it and say when used appropriately. And that there are dead people that weren't, where they weren't used appropriately, where they were tased 20-some times and so had heart attacks and died.
And I'm aware of some departments that are questioning the use of them, so I didn't know whether we were in that group.
And Herb and I have had these discussions. It's all about management of your people, too. It's no different than the gun on my hip. It's no different than the OC spray. You've got to, you've got to have proper management, you've got to have proper training. If you have an instance where it was used improperly, you've got to deal with it. And I can tell you, we've had a couple instances where I thought it was used improperly and we dealt with it.
And I think my tipping point became officer safety. If you're not doing anything to cause yourself to get tased, I am confident you will not get tased in El Dorado. But if you want to fight a policeman, the opportunity for tasing is much higher than if you're just walking down the street. And so it ended up, I think we had a, my tipping point was we had a workers' comp. We had an officer injured by combative individual. And had he had the tool, we wouldn't have had the injured officer. So I ended up, my tipping point was officer safety and sending them home in the same shape they came in. And that was, so I'm, I fought the notion for a long time.
And I'm going to date myself now, but, you know, I've been around long enough. When I started, you had a revolver and a nightstick that was so big, none of us carried it. So when you got in a confrontation, you had to fight your way out of it. This day and age with all the technology, it's rare that an officer should have to get in a physical fight with anybody if they use the tools correctly. And to Herb's point, I think it has cut down on workman's comp claims statistically nationwide, so.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully, that answered your question.
No, it does. Thank you.
Anything else from anybody? Oh, you betcha. Thanks for your support.
Sure. Okay. Next on our agenda is public comments. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission? You come up, state your name, and you have a copy of. You come up, state your name and, and um you have a, a copy of the policy for public comment?
No.
Is it up there on the podium? Okay.
I've been here several times and so I kind of remember. Sure. My name is Ginger Hurst and I've lived in El Dorado for almost eighteen years. We live at seven twenty West Ash. And I would just say that it's nice to be here again. Mr. Llewellyn has been very gracious to me through the years. And so I'm here to present an opportunity for you all um as a citizen of this community to grow in faith. We have been talking for several years about the property across from Oil Hill School. And it would be tastefully done, it would be a chapel, it, there would be no denomination associated with it. It would be open twenty-four hours a day. It is perfectly suited as it is, the gentleman before talked about how the highways intersect. I know that um people would come because of its beauty, but also because of a need to, as the times, they are changing. And uh I and a group of about ten people are committed to be prepared that people who need refreshing will have a place to come, to be refreshed in the presence of God. It is a very tasteful chapel, it is Tudor, English Tudor style, made out of stone. And it is a vision that I've carried in my heart, I didn't dream it up. And so I very um tenderly say that I believe that it was a vision that God gave me. I am not a um public speaker, I'm not a confrontational person. And so for me to be in this role is an act of God. And so I would encourage this committee to consider the benefits of what this chapel would do for this town. Um as, my main concern is that um people of faith will have a refuge in, in the times to come that only God himself can give. And opening it up at that particular place will give the advantage of many people. There's a chapel in um Arkansas that has thousands and thousands of people who come to visit. This I see as an um, an emergency room, kind of, a spiritual emergency room, if you will. And it would be people of all faiths welcome. And so I appreciate your time. I um, I don't presently know your, your plan for that property. I know several things have been mentioned through the years. But we would be happy to be Plan A and um I can promise you it would benefit the city. The scripture tells us to seek the welfare of the city. And many things are going on that are beneficial to the city. And the, the beautiful um promoting of, of the downtown. And we have the college and so many, the lake and so many things. And so I would just um submit to this committee that a chapel would be a bedrock of help in times of trouble. I'm not a prophet and I don't see the future, but I do know that the times are changing. And it could benefit many, many people, just as other chapels have benefited others in the past. So um I'll turn the mic back to you if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer.
Is it, are, are you wanting to purchase the property?
Yes, yes, to purchase that property.
I remember, you've been here once before, but I couldn't remember if it was for the purchase.
This is the fourth, but who's counting?
Yeah, I went here for all four of those, but. Have we, is there any design, anything else we know other than what you say?
I have an architect who came the first time with me. And she is the architect that worked on the, the Spiritual Life Center at the prison. Her name is Rachel Mont and she is very committed to this project. And we're just waiting to hear from the city if this might be a possibility. We have pictures and plans, we've talked numerous times. Just a few weeks ago, I saw her and she said, are you ready for me? I said, not just yet, hang on. So it's a very serious commitment of, over about fourteen years that um, that I have been, this has been in my heart.
Herb, would the, would her next, her next step, first step be to get with our city planner and you? See if that fits into the use out there and all that good stuff?
I mean, church is allowed, is a special use everywhere. And so it's, I guess I'd say it's a question for the commission of what, if anything, you envision for this property. Um we could sure bring you pictures, show it to you what it is. I think um before you may wanna divest of it, you may wanna understand their ability to build it. I mean, if, if they have ten million bucks in the bank and that's what it takes, then, then that can change your perception about how quickly you do it. If you wanna, um, if you don't have any serious objections to us vetting it and finding out more, happy to do that for you. It's currently zoned industrial. It's zoned industrial, it was purchased, a little history, it was purchased. Um when BG Products was coming, they needed some property on the north side of the tracks. It was in a trust with about fifty owners, a hundred owners. It has lots of trust owners. The only real way for us to get that property was to condemn it. And so we, it was a friendly condemnation, we did it through um, I think Judge Ward heard it. And so um at that meeting, at that court hearing, several of the owners came forward and asked us to buy the bottom acreage. So this acreage where the fire station is and the acreage that Ms. Hurst is talking about. And actually, everything over to CDH, or we already own that property, over there to the creek somewhere. Because they would've had that piece stranded. And so um the commission went, said that'd be fine, and so we came to own all that property. But it was, it was envisioned as industrial. There have been um apprehensions on how heavy of an industrial use is used that close to A, the school and B, the residential housing. So um I guess in, in my mind, it was gonna have to be the right, that any use on that ground had to be cognizant of what's across the street. And so um that's kind of been where we've been at. I think the city has about seven thousand an acre, does that sound right to you?
You know, I'm not sure about that number. We, we did look at one time the possibility of residential. And maybe rezoning that with a fire station um going out there. The remaining property has an active oil lease on it. There are some petroleum lines as well as um various other city infrastructure across it. Flood plain in the rear, so there's a limited amount of property that's really available. But we had done some sketch-up, kind of just concepts on how a little residential subdivision would fit in there. But really haven't discussed at depth anything too, too much on it. Uh and what you see occurring on that property right now today is um QuickTrip was nee, in need of a site to um conduct a land farm on for some of their soil they encountered at Central and Haverhill for their construction. And the city was nee, in need of some fill behind the fire station. So that's kind of the dirt work and the rock you see out there right now.
And I think what she's talking about tonight, correct me if I'm wrong, is just the ground west of Fire Station Number Two to the turnpike and probably sitting right up there on that knob right off of Six. And I think before we talked about, again, that little knob that sits on the east side of the fire station. I think that was the original discussion, if I remember that right, but I could be.
It, it was on the west side.
It's always been on the west, okay. So that's how we came to own it. It was to have as painless a condemnation process as possible.
So do any of y'all have an interest in having Herb and staff vet this? Get back to us.
Well, I guess my, my question would be, certainly I respect the notion of, of a chapel and uh understand what it can be. Uh most of the examples of chapels that I've been to are pretty serene. This is not necessarily a very serene site.
That is true, but I contend that its purpose makes it serene.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I would, I, I don't wanna do a lot of work on it right now, but maybe getting a better understanding of what this looks like. I guess I'm not getting the full vision, other than a chapel next to the fire department. Maybe that's just what I need to vision. But as far as the style of building and size and what we're looking at.
Well, I can um speak with the architect and we can get some drawings going for you. I think a visual aid is always helpful.
They certainly are, I want to, uh, if, if some of the drawings have already been produced, I'd certainly be uh willing to, to look at them. Um otherwise, uh in my own mind, yeah, I'd like to, to uh the staff to vet out or at least remind, remind this commission what has been done in that, on that in the past. And uh see what becomes of it.
Okay, well, I appreciate your time and um wish you well as you make the best decisions that you can for this city. I mean, we, my husband and I pray for, for the city every day, so. You're in our thoughts and prayers, yes, thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Okay, let's move on to consent agenda. Everybody's had a chance to see minutes, it's in their packet. And the appropriations report, any questions associated there too?
I didn't have it. Anyone have any?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? I, I have one question on the appropriations. I see our police vehicles came from, from uh Alatha. I mean, did you get it, did, do we?
We did.
Bid those locally at all, or how do we, how do we go all the way up there?
Um, we bid them out and they were low bid. These are the SUVs and so um they had the state bid and it's really not even. You still here? What do you call that program you participate in? When you hear what we paid for them, you'll be sad that you can't buy them.
Most of the Impalas we've got, I got through the KHP Partners Program, which is a GSA federal bidding, it's only available to police departments. Uh, excuse me, we let out bids to uh Shawnee Mission, Rustiac, Ford in Wichita and uh Ford of Augusta. And like I said, the uh Shawnee Mission Ford has the state bid for those particular vehicles anyways, so. They came well under what Rustiac did and Ford of Augusta chose not to bid.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to clarify that. Alright, we have a motion and second on the table, any further discussion? Hall in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries four zero without a vote from Mr. Badway. Next thing on our agenda is a temporary uh permit for Dilly Dilly.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, um we've had this discussion a couple times here lately. Uh last year, the commission passed the ability for people to have a temporary liquor license within the city limits of El Dorado. Dilly Dilly will be participating in the Frontier Western Celebration and would like to serve alcoholic liquor from three to ten on July thirtieth as part of their fashion show. Um it will be at one forty-two North Main and will be open to the public. Any questions?
Question is the commission. Alright, entertain a motion.
What's resolution number?
Twenty-eight oh five.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight zero five, a resolution allowing for the temporary sale of alcoholic liquor, one forty-two North Main on July thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, from three P M. to ten P M.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hall in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five zero. Okay, next thing on our agenda is something we've seen before, which is a petition for project number four seven seven, paging of Gouda Street.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, at, at the June fifteenth meeting, this item was tabled. Since that time, we have had conversations with the petitioner on the project and have actually drafted a new petition and some of the suggestions to, to try to make this to be mindful of the costs associated with the project, as well as be mindful of the uh, the um work that is ongoing and the investment that is being made on Gouda Street. Um a petition was drafted with the um city forces building the street. This being only a three-hundred-foot street, we felt like we could, we could handle that work. So a petition was presented to um both owners. It was signed um by Mr. Patton. And um, and by his signature, it is a successful petition. I think both the properties, owners are here tonight, if you have any questions of them or they'd like to make any statements. Staff would recommend on this project that you um if you so see fit, you reject the original March twenty-fifth petition and accept the July first, two thousand fifteen petition.
Okay, um before we start any discussion, I thank you Scott for that explanation. Before we start any discussion, I feel the need to disclose that um although I don't have any direct uh contact or, or business relationship with Mr. Patton, the owner, I do. We are, my firm did do the, the drawings for the building that was built there. I think that's, uh, once party removed, I don't feel like I've got a conflict of interest unless this panel feels otherwise. But I wanted to disclose that, uh, at least that. The construction company, Briggs Construction, hired us to, to do the drawings on the building that will be served by this road. Okay. So any, any further discussion or questions from the commission?
When we drafted the new deal, like when it says that we, you know, would be doing the work, does that just mean that, I guess, what was the change or what was the benefit in us doing it versus?
What, what it did is, is significantly, um, well, almost fifty percent dropped the cost to the, to the owners in the improvement district. Um you had one owner, Mr. Patton, who owned the entire property on the west. And there was two parcels on the east side of Gouda Street owned by the Doris Higgins Trust and um.
Did the benefit percentages get adjusted as well?
Uh, we went ahead and made a modification to the, the improvement district line on the east properties. Um those costs are still spilt fifty-fifty.
But this took care of the concerns from the last meeting that were presented?
That Herb voiced, the, the concern about where the benefit district line was drawn on these property, that was modified. Um so now, now you have the west side property that has seventy, almost seventy-four thousand square feet in the improvement district in the east. the improvement district and the east side has 26,000 square feet. Now, now keep in mind, I, you take the cost of the road and you divide that in half because the west side pays for half of the project and the east side pays for half. So it, it really didn't, there's-
I guess that would confuse me, why, if we've got a difference in square footage of benefit, why would that still be a 50/50 split?
That is the procedures the city has used to initiate, to create improvement districts that each side of the road pays for their respective portion. So there is a cost per square foot established.
So will you be doing the entire road or just a small section of the road?
We, we are just going 300 foot north of Sixth Avenue.
Since the trailer park's not planning to be a part of this, can he close that off just for his property until later on? If they want to be a part of it, then pay the rest of it?
It, it's still a public right of way, so it'd have to be open.
So they're going to benefit from it whether he pays for it or not, because you're building a road for them to get back to it. That's why it's not fair to him. They should participate in it, too.
Yeah, and I'm, I guess, we modify our procedures and, and protocol, but, but that's, this is a way we've, going back for years and years and years, we have established improvement district lines, came up with how we spread those costs over the properties and, and the wording of the petition.
And Scott explained to me, I guess, if there's a 100,000 square foot of benefit and 75 is on one side of the street and 25 is on the other, it seems to me like one would be, one's portion would be bigger than the other because their benefit is bigger. What you're saying is, it's half of the street, each side pays half of the street no matter where you draw the line.
Correct.
And, and so, and let's look at Tuanda. We have that benefit district on it. Each one of those parcels is paying the same amount?
Tuanda, Tuanda's, let's maybe look at a different one because of the county portion of Tuanda.
Okay, how about fourth or fifth?
Fourth and fifth, it was split, so the north half paid the cost per square foot that was different than the south half.
Okay. And then, I think to your question, and I, the, the difference in the cost, when you get right down to it, if the city does it, all the labor that a contractor would have is being paid by the people of the city of El Dorado at large, because it would be done with our, our troops. So the city's portion goes up to pay those costs, but the project cost went way down because the labor is, you're having employees that work for you every day do that work. And so, it's, it's, if we added all the labor in it, I suspect, no, it'd still be less, but it wouldn't be half. It would probably be 80% maybe.
Well, and I guess that's a rub for me, too. I don't know that this type of project is something that we at the city, which our employees are paid out of general fund, should be taking on. For one, is I, I, I just, it's my belief, I don't think it's the type of project, it's a project we've been doing by competitive bid in the past and that it probably ought to stay there. I don't think, if, if there's significant savings to the landowner, then I appreciate that, but there's a lot of other streets that got built in the city that were competitively bid, and I don't think that's fair to the rest of the landowners, to be quite honest. And then add to that, I mean, we just had a discussion here the past few weeks about not having enough labor to do the work each day and then committing those to, to a street project, I guess I question that. We evidently do have labor, labor to share, so those are the things I'm wrestling with and because of that, I, I struggle with the city being the, the labor as a part of it. I, I support, I support the project. I think it needs to be done and I really appreciate what Mr. Patton's doing to his property. All that's going to be a positive thing for the community and for, for Sixth Street. But this particular conundrum, as I called it before, is, is, I, I struggle supporting that as a city project. That's me.
You just got to remember, this is a development that's going to be in USD 490 and it's going to help the school system.
I, I get all of, I get all of the pluses that are a part of it, but I think it's a slippery slope precedent. I want to start building streets in my housing development and I want labor, I want material only because that's what, that's what they got. And I'm going to, I mean, I, I, I don't know where that stops. It's not our policy and I don't really like going down that road.
And I, I share some of those hesitations and some of those thoughts, and I mean, you did what we asked. We were kind of thinking, what could be another solution? And you brought a different solution. I do appreciate what Brian's doing with all that and I want to find a way to make this work, but I, I kind of do, I get fearful that we set a new tone that some people might think we did it for them, so we should do it for, for the others. For the rest of you. Nick, what do you think?
I still kind of like the idea I had two weeks ago where we defer, we defer the cost to the property that has no access to.
So you're wanting to go with the original cost and move forward?
Well, but the property, the property on the east, is that right? Am I right? Property on, the house that has no access, we would defer that assessment until what time that if that property ever changes hands or they decide they want access to it?
What did we say the downfall was?
I thought that was, I thought that was more fair.
What did we say the downfall was?
I, I, I think you've got, you've got situations in that as well, where just like Herb mentioned Tuanda, you've got property owners that live on Sharon or Audrey that are halfway up the block, paying assessments on Tuanda. Same with anywhere, that don't have direct access to that road, but are-
But that's been a policy that everybody pays for two streets, correct?
And that, and that is consistent with that policy. And redrawing that line makes it still consistent with that policy.
And I guess redrawing that line, in, in my mind, I was thinking redrawing that line changed the square footage, which changed the percentage of project cost. That's what, that's the way I heard it.
Yeah, maybe I didn't do a good enough job explaining that, but yeah, it, it really has no bearing on it. It's, it's, they split the cost equally based on each side of the road.
Ryan didn't have no choice between the PT welded in his building when they built the road over there. That's why it was barricaded off on the end because Greer didn't want it to go on through. So, you know, he kind of feels the same about the other road. He's trying to develop it, it needs to be taken care of.
Going back, did you just say what he suggested fits policy? What Nick was suggesting? I'm sorry, I was writing stuff down.
What Nick suggested is, again, not normal, but not unprecedented. Unprecedented in city, in city properties. We have deferred cost on out-of-city properties and the city is essentially carrying the note until it develops and comes in the city. And when they ask for, when they ask for, when they want to develop it and they need infrastructure, they need water and sewer, then they're going to have to pay that assessment. And we've done that in properties outside the city. I don't think we've ever done it inside. And that's what, what Nick's asking is, can we just carry the note on the property that, that doesn't need it necessarily? So he's saying the house. And when they want access, they'll have an assessment waiting. I think that, so the answer to his question is, sure you can, you just need to know there's a cost associated with that. You'll have to write it down somewhere so we don't forget. And I suspect it'll be in the form of a, we'll cloud the title of the property.
Okay. So it sounds like we've got a handful of things on the table. One is to, to accept the petition as it was presented last month or last meeting, or accept the petition as it's presented and modified, or create a new one that changes the, changes the language similar to what Nick was saying. I mean, if, I guess if we can change it like that, we could also change the language such of square footage associated with cost, could we not? I think we've got three, four, four options in front of us.
And actually, and, and they can be in combination.
Yeah.
And so I think the, what the statute says, it lists ways to do it and then it says it just has to be fair. Fairness is a purview of your board.
And, and the, the old statutes, the, the original 12-6 statutes, which are the assessment laws of the state of Kansas, were very specific in how you create an improvement districts and boundaries and, and how you set the costs associated with those. And, and when they revised those as 12-6A, they got a little looser and like Herb mentioned, the four different options. We have tried to follow those original 12-6 on every project we can to keep the fairness and, and going and, and the same procedures that the city has always utilized.
So I guess, since we have four options, I don't know which one this fits into. I, I guess out of my takeaway, I would like to see, I'd like to see the project happen because I think it'll be a benefit, but I also would prefer not for us to do it, just because I am afraid us setting that tone is not a good thing. And so, those would be my, I'd be, I guess, my one thing in making it happen, I guess, whichever one that falls into with what other preferences you all might have, that's my, my biggest thing in it.
100% of the owners of record signed this latest petition, is that correct?
Not, not correct. At the time, we only have one of the prop, one of the property owners signing. There's three parcels, but he is the majority landowner.
So we're going to charge him all the way back to railroad tracks and charge the other guy?
We just charge your board roads getting built?
300 feet.
300 feet?
Yep. The, 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 the boundary lines that go onto their property, either west or east, depending on which side of the street you're on, are, are, are different.
If, if you, if there's a majority of you that like what Chase has suggested, then you'll want to approve the resolution from your last meeting, not this one. If you want to do, if you want to exempt the house for now, you don't have to do that tonight. That can be done at a later date, is that correct, Scott?
And, and I'm thinking you could even just make that in your motion and that's something we could, we could add.
But that'll ultimately be done after the project's done and we're getting ready to-
When assessments are spread.
Correct. And so you, you don't even have to make that final decision tonight. You, but I guess, well, like Scott said, it'd probably be appropriate to put it in the motion that you want us to examine that and bring it back to you. But the, to, to bid it out would be on your last petition and that's what you'd vote for.
So we would do what we had last time and then just within that say we'd like to examine.
And I would, if you wouldn't mind, I'd ask you, if, if you're going that direction, to state it as the March 25th, 2015 petition?
Okay. Do you guys want, how do you feel about that, doing the first petition with us examining the house? Kendra?
There are too many options here.
I know, we're narrowing them down.
You think so?
I hope so.
Seems to me like the first question we need to get are, is like Vince said, is it, is it fair to have, to have the city at large pay the labor? Yes or no? If we, if we think no, then we go, then we would go with the first petition. And then the second part of the question is, do, to look at, are we going to defer the assessment to that one parcel of property where the house is? So there's actually two questions, correct?
In what Chase said, that's right.
I'm saying no to the labor. I think that the city at large-
So by deferring the assessment to the property to the east, even though it is actually improving the back part of their property, I'm not sure I see that as being fair. That doesn't mean I can't be convinced, but my initial reaction is, it's going in, they should have to pay their share.
They won't be able to ever sell the property until it's paid off.
Oh, no, it can sell, sell it just now.
Oh, yeah, it can sell.
It can sell.
They'll just have to tell them there's a special assessment against it.
They can't have a curb cut. They can't have access, they'd have to jump the curb.
Okay.
Correct? They couldn't have a driveway, they couldn't have a curb cut on that side.
Does anyone have any special preference on the second question? Because I'm, I mean, I know, I know what I want with the first one, the second one, I mean, I'm cool with us examining it. If everyone else is cool with us examining it.
What are you cool with, Chase?
Cool, I'm cool with option one.
And that is?
The original recommendation that we had with us examining the house.
Well, that isn't, that isn't really option one. Option one is just what you saw two weeks ago, which has the engineer's estimate based on what we believe is the current price to build that road from a third-party vendor, that we would bid out that work. The, so that is, that gets the road going. The second piece would be examination of that or not examining that, because I can't remember, someone made the point, everyone in town has paid for two streets for a long time, and this will be, this will be different. And, and I think to, to Vince's point, us building the road will be different. We just built some that were replacements that were already built to standard, and so that's part of what we do. But this probably would be the first time city troops built a brand-new road to city standards.
Brand-new. The, the one that we did last year, there were assessments involved, property owners that have to pay. Recently, you accepted the petition for paving the alley for the brewery utilizing material only.
We gotta be business friendly, so I'll go with number one, and, and number one only.
I'm hoping Tabitha's writing something that we can read if we.
Well, it's right now, it's, it's just simply the original resolution. Is that where we're at?
Yes.
It'd be to move to accept the petition.
I'm counting.
From March twenty fifth, right.
Someone's got to.
I've heard two people say that so far, so I'm just holding up fingers.
Ryan needs to move forward on his property, we need to make a decision.
Yep, I agree. I'd entertain a motion.
I guess that's where is the original, is it in this package?
You just need to read that and spell, specify at the end, March twenty.
The petition dated March twenty fifth.
Correct. Resolution number ten?
So I'd move the resolution number twenty eight oh six and then the date, what was the date?
Petition dated March twenty sixth, twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth.
Fifth.
March twenty fifth? Where am I adding that petition in this mix?
Just put it on.
Just stated at the first.
Okay. I moved the resolution number twenty eight oh six with the petition for March twenty fifth, two thousand fifteen. A resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, paving improvements, scooter street, project four seven seven.
And I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Yes, I have a question. So if we, if this passes, that's it, no, we're not looking at anything down the road, correct?
Correct.
Because there was no caveat attached to it, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
We amend the motion, that's correct.
And there was no amendment, correct?
That's not at this point. No further questions, discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Okay. Next on our agenda is advisory board appointments. I think we've got youth commission appointments, correct? The in front of us, I guess I'd entertain a motion to, need a discussion on youth commission, it was the same, I think we added.
Added one.
Added one. Nick, in the past you've read the names, you interested in doing that again?
Yeah, and I, I went through them, I, if I butcher one, I apologize. I move to approve the advisory board appointments as presented, and they are Jessica Baker, Clarice Bowlin, Hannah Brock, Taylor Brock, Callie Carter, Sidney Davidson, Abigail Edwards, Mary Gomez, here we go, Isaac Har, Hannah Horry, Justin Jones, Megan Klein, Lauren Lowry, Sean Lures, Cherokee Reagan, Gretchen Shum, and Harley Thornton.
You nailed it.
Second.
Did, was that, was yours a motion?
Yes.
Okay. And second, thank you. It's moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. New business. Anything from the commission that you'd like to address? I guess I would, I would like, before I pose that question, I would throw a couple of things out here. Didn't get a chance to ask during the, during the report from the police, whether or not we could address a little bit about how the fireworks. We certainly had some calls on that, and it's certainly an issue that I, I committed that we would talk about, whether it be at this commission or later when the emotions dry down a little bit, but I would like to report from the police department on the fireworks.
Yes, sir. We ran those numbers this morning, from, from the time of, and I had them run it from Au, or August, June twenty seventh, when they were legal for sale through eight o'clock this morning. We responded to twenty eight fireworks complaints. That's down about four from last year, but they seem to be going down every year. Keep in mind of those twenty eight complaints, eight of those were during times where it was legal to shoot fireworks, like, I mean, one of them was at four o'clock in the afternoon, so. Another, another eleven of those complaints were a time period just after ten o'clock, between ten and ten thirty, when it's technically illegal to shoot them, except for Fourth of July, which is midnight, so. In the big scheme of things, what we responded to were people actually called in and we investigated, pretty minimal. And that number seems to be going down every year. I can remember a time where we responded to hundred plus calls, so, like I said, every year, they just seems to be going down and down, so.
And I think the, the calls that I've gotten this year, I mean, are more, you know, people know that we have fireworks and the people like fireworks and they're cool with it, but it's just people not being respectful of the cutoff time. And I know probably some of the people that called me aren't folks that would call the police and make a formal complaint. And so maybe just what are, what are we doing proactively, other than just patrolling the streets, if anything, to try and?
And, and I can tell you, I talked to the supervisor that was working the third that evening, and, and they were going around getting people slowed down before that ten o'clock hour even come, so that, we do that every year. I would like to think it's because of some of that enforcement, our numbers have gone down, so, because I can remember a time, like I said, it was hundred, two hundred complaints during that time, and every year it just seems to go down and down and down, so. I, I, I realize that there are some animal owners that, that, I can tell you, I had an animal, I had a sheltie that lived to be thirteen years old, she hated fireworks. Nights like tonight, with the thunder, she'd be down in the basement. I've got a, what I call the replacement sheltie, that we got now, she's three years old and it, it doesn't even faze her. But we just, I know our old sheltie, we would take her out to Cattle Out in the Country for a week. Because my boy, when he was home, he'd shoot fireworks that whole week and just drive that dog crazy, so. And we're cognizant of that, you know, and, uh, people have animals that are troubled by those fireworks, but you know, I think the vast majority of people like them. And like I said, I think the complaints have gone down year after year after year. I know today's the sixth, Sunday night, I heard some in my neighborhood at like two minutes till ten, I'm like, oh, here we go. And by ten o'clock, it was over with and it stopped, and I didn't hear anything rest of the night, so.
Well, that way my name is read.
Well, and, and I guess I would tack on to, to Chase's comments, uh, two things. Some of the patrons that contacted me were hesitant to contact the police, ironically, because, not because they didn't think you would respond, but because you thought, they thought you had better things to do than, than police fireworks and.
I, I get that too.
They didn't, they just were more disappointed in their disrespect to their neighbors and didn't really want to call the police. And I, I guess I encouraged them to, to do that, call the non-emergency number, and I, I told them, we may not be able to find the fuse lighter at eleven o'clock, but at least the car, the police patrol car driving around the neighborhood makes a difference.
Absolutely.
So I did encourage them to go ahead and do that.
And, and fortunately, a lot of the times, we see the remnants of what happened when they called, so.
Well, and that leads me right to my next comment, is cleaning up the mess that's in the street. We had a nice rain wash it all down the river today, but, but that's shouldn't say that, but anyway, that's that to me is, is, is part of the issue, it's twofold. The mess that's left in the streets and what can, what are we doing as a city policy for that, and these aerial fireworks that end up on, in property that's a block away or on somebody's house, what? What, what are, what are our positions on that? That seems a little bit.
Our, unless it's changed, it's against the law to shoot fireworks in the streets of El Dorado, and so so we know that doesn't happen, and we don't have a mess. The reality is that lots of people clean up and lots of people don't. And I have even been, when I asked about cleaning up one of my friend, one of my son's friends, well, you have a street sweeper. Well, that's of course true, we do have a street sweeper, but we didn't deposit them. And so the expectation is you clean up your mess, and so that is our expectation. I'd say it, it often goes unfulfilled.
Well, I think that's to my point, I don't know whether there's anything that we can, we always, we're asked to look at the fireworks issue every year, and I don't know whether some of those issues, again, after the, the emotion tames down a little bit, whether those are a couple of items that we can think about or have a discussion in terms of how that affects our policy moving forward, but.
And the most of the calls I got too, did not want to call you. And it's kind of like, well, I'm not going to come out and stop you, you know, so, call them.
And, and even like, your, the email that, that you got, I got, and I responded as well, and it was, I'm, I'm completely sympathetic. I want to go to sleep at ten o'clock, and that even was on the fourth, I'd, you know, it didn't change because it was Fourth of July. I, I think people just need to understand, that's part of the function. Don't feel bad, it's why you pay property tax, it's what we're here for, so that you can pursue happiness, and for right now, the commission has said that you, you can fire them from these days and these times, and that's the expectation, and don't, don't feel bad about calling the police, I mean.
We, we can't do anything about it if we don't know about it, so.
Right, and, and happy to, and happy to, to go by and tell them to quit, and if, and if they're not willing to do that, we are happy to write them a ticket, not, not the goal, the goal is to obey the laws that exist today.
Okay.
And so, don't, don't think twice, dial the number, we'll run by and, and if, if a bank's been robbed, they probably won't see us real quickly, but if everything is going good otherwise, we're out, because this is a the commission and the community have struggled with this, and
And we might.
And there's apprehension.
Maybe, and maybe we have, I know youth commission does some stuff with the fireworks, but in the stuff like we promote on Facebook, we're shooting them off and some of the rules and regulations, do we put that non-emergency number on there? Because I think most people, like I'm one, I look for that non-emergency number and I'm stuck, I'm like, I'll just call nine one one, I think, no one wants to call nine one one over the fireworks.
I don't know that it is, but if.
But maybe we push that a little bit.
But if they even dial the city hall number after hours, it rolls over to dispatch, so.
Three, two, one, ninety, one hundred.
If you dial that after hours or on weekends, it rolls over to dispatch, so.
Rolls over to dispatch.
Yeah.
But it shows it's a non-emergency call.
Yeah.
Now, I feel about firework clutter in the street about the same as I feel about grass clippings being blown to the street. But that's not your department.
Well, kind of is now.
And it's against the law too.
Yep, we do have code enforcement as part of the police department as of June first, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So, yeah, we, Sarah's over at my department, has been for a couple of months now, and she's actually going to the police academy in September. She'll be a fully sworn officer once she completes that, and will probably be doing code enforcement in a police uniform. So, uh, but yes, we, she.
Call us. We'll, we'll respond.
Kendra gave me an idea.
Oh, dear.
We send teachers.
There you go.
Because you're more inclined to listen to a teacher than a cop.
You know, and we have.
I'll go.
I don't know.
We have.
I mean, if Kendra came and told you to quit shooting off your fireworks, I can quit shooting off my fireworks.
Mary Martha used to be in charge of our teacher.
Mary Martha.
And, and I don't, I don't know how many we have working for us this summer, I know one, because I saw him.
Mary Martha was doing the.
Sick, sick Mary Martha. That could be a summer gig.
She didn't come back this year.
We're losing track of this. Thank you for that. Yeah, innovative. Any more new business from the commission?
I would just real quickly say thank you to staff and our summer staff. I thought, I was down at East Park, Mayor was, or at least I, I was down there towards the end, so some of the others might have been there. But that was, I thought, a really great event and a great turnout, and I know I got a lot of positive feedback from the folks that were down there. And I swung by the pool and they had a good turnout, and everyone was well behaved and enjoying themselves, and so I think, you know, kudos to Kevin and all the other departments involved in organizing all that, but it was really a nice holiday for the community. I know you were down at the game, and I've, I, I heard as far as the fireworks, I didn't end up making it down there, but that it was a great show and people were really impressed and pleased, and so, that's all.
Yeah, and it was a good baseball game. And the Broncos won, I could report that too. That was, kudos, was a good day.
I was out at the lake and there was a little bit of disappointment, the fireworks weren't out there, but I explained the difference after you took, sent the email out to us about the fireworks displays and stuff, but Vinny's place put off a, an awesome fireworks display for us all to watch, so.
And I will make a real quick comment, I did drive by right before the fireworks went off, I didn't go into the game or see the show, but I made a loop. And some people have had some kind of complaints about us moving the fireworks around, and the one thing that I really liked about it being down here, I saw a lot of kids that were not with their parents, that were able to ride their bikes or walk down and watch the fireworks from out in the street, and I, I appreciate that, and so. It was, it was, I mean, it, the, the streets were lined, yeah, I'm sure, I know the inside, the stadium was packed, but lots of kids just kind of hanging out up by Dairy Queen and, and the parking lot of the theater.
And several people that brought a blanket and laid out on the lawn next to the community building, so.
Oh, I think you had.
Pretty good view.
People all around, senior center, Y parking lot, our parking lot, besides in the stadium.
Nice for it to be accessible for the young people that maybe you couldn't have gotten out to the lake to see them, so. Anyways, good job.
I know I had three inches of rain at my house before I got here. How did the city fare?
You know, I, I went out in the, we go out when it rains hard, because it's the only way to understand how drainage is working. During the storm, we were inundated, we did, we got a couple, three inches in, in a half an hour to an hour. I thought everything recovered quickly. I came, I swung by again at, around town at five forty-five, and there wasn't any appreciable water on the roads. I mean, everything's running, but nothing was flooded, and I guess, I think, I think we did phenomenal, given the volume, volume of water and the duration that we got it.
There's a lot of tree damage around town.
Oh, yeah.
And I think public works crews were working diligently, clearing streets just up to the hour, right when you guys are starting.
They're still out, I've already got texts from Brad, and so.
Well, to that, I think last storm we had, we had some trees that were caught up in power lines and, and some residents that were concerned that they were being forgotten rather than to, to clean the tree up. If you've got those, I would, I guess I would suggest that you leave a note on the door of the people in that neighborhood to let them know that. to let them know that we'll get that tree as soon as Cox or Westar or somebody gets their lines out of it. If, if there's any of that, even that circumstance, let them know that we haven't been forgot, that they haven't been forgotten.
I think vintage is out of pow, was out of power when, when I came to work, I don't know...
Well, it looks like, are we supposed to get round two?
Yeah, we're getting, we're supposed to get more, and I guess, you know, uh, it could have a lot of cleanup coming, but there was a couple of occasions where a tree was, somebody thought that it'd been a week or a couple of weeks since they got dealt with, and it was because the power company couldn't get to it in a timely manner. So just letting the residents know that we haven't just left you. We just, uh, can't deal with it on a city level until, uh, power lines are dealt with.
I was heading home from work after it first hit. This whole area was fine. South Main was flooded from curb to curb near the Napa.
Yeah, so...
Oh, I mean, I think...
Central, central was flooded.
North Main where I, where, I was at, it was all underwater.
And I was, it was coming down so hard, I, I was stopped in the middle of central, and I couldn't even see the front of the hood. I hadn't stopped in central, too. I mean, it was... It was really coming down.
I had Rain-X on my windshield, so I could see perfectly until the air conditioner fogged my window. Then I had difficulty, but no rain and only intermediate wipers. So I'm just putting out my commercial here.
Okay. Any other new business? Uh, city manager's report.
I didn't have anything, um, tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Next thing on our agenda then is executive session. Uh, executive session for legal matters, uh, do we have a time proposed?
I'd say about fifteen minutes, or might be to give a little more time, we'll start with that.
Well, if we think we're going to start with a little more time, how about we start with twenty? Fifty for twenty? That would mean we'd come back into session at eight forty-two. Okay, need a motion to, to convene in the executive session.
I moved to recess into an executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters and to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting in the city commission room at eight forty-two P M.
It's been moved in second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries five to zero. Thank you.